If you would like to speak, you have four minutes to fill out your consent form. Once we start at six o'clock, we will not be taking any more consent forms. You have four minutes to fill out your consent form with our city secretary to my left. If you would like to speak tonight on the agenda, you have one minute before we start the meeting. You can fill out your form with the city secretary. You have one, less than one minute now. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out to our special city council workshop meeting. Madam Secretary, I'll let the record show that Councilwoman Cobb and Councilwoman Gonzalez is not present.
Madam Mayor, are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
DS 23038, discuss and receive citizen input regarding potential capital projects and bond issuance.
Thank you, ma'am. We will start with our citizen comments. Ronnie Russell, you have four minutes. Good evening, sir.
Madam Mayor, our agenda has the discussion listed prior to citizen comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kagan, I went on to the citizen comments. Mr. Russell, I'm sorry. We normally, be nice, Mr. Wilkinson. We normally have citizen comments, and I just go right on that.
It's a little backwards.
It's okay. The floor is yours, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll bring up the presentation with some updated information since the last time that we met. And we've had, we've finished the audit, we know how much cash we have on hand, and then we'll show you some plans for possibility for future GO issues and certificate of obligation issues. As soon as we get that pulled up, we'll start.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, for catching that.
Well, what I'll do then is I'll pull it up on my iPad and get started.
I apologize, Mr. Kagan, we're checking on that now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I can, I can do it, but you won't have anything to look at if we don't get it brought up. Can I email it to you? Okay. I just sent it to your email. What I can do while they're pulling that up is give you a little bit of intro. Back on September 20th, 2022, council provided a motion of direction to provide a financial forecast with future debt service capacity. And the idea behind that was to see what would be a reasonable amount for a GO bond election. And then we got back together on November 15th, 2022, and city council provided a motion of direction to seek citizen input at a special city council workshop on January 9, 2023. And we did that, and then we had a discussion, and the motion of direction was to seek citizen input through the city's website, and we have been doing that. And also, part of that motion of direction was to set a meeting for today, March 30th, at 6:00 PM. And we can give you the, the results of the citizen input. Now, this is not scientific, remember that. These are just people that decided to go to the website and leave their input. All right. Thank you. Okay, these are the, this is the information that I just went over, and here we are, March 30th, 6:00. And I've got two lists here. I won't stay on this one because the next one, this one's alphabetical. We had a total of 117 responses, but if we go to the next slide, this gives you the responses sorted by the greatest to the least. And so, number one was the Southwest Branch Library, and Rec Center, Teen Center, New Park Development, City Hall, all received quite a bit of, of positive response. And then, so if I go back, you can actually see the raw numbers there. If I go down to the Southwest Branch Library, it's at the bottom, it had 71 responses. So you can see, this is not, 117 is not a huge number of responses, but, but this is what we received from our website. Then, as we start preparing the capital projects budget, the first thing we do is look for available cash on hand. And as you know, we just finished our audit. So we have, in the general fund, some cash on hand, and it's always best to allocate and deal with that first before you talk about borrowing any money. So in the, in the general fund, there's 8.75 million in excess fund balance available. And these are some recommendations. This is the first time the council's had a chance to look at this, so you may have completely different ideas. There's a couple of things on here we've already committed. The second one, the ADA professional services agreement. And then, as you know, with all the disruption in, in the automobile industry, all of our police interceptors, our orders were canceled, and they told us we would get next year's order at a higher price. So we put this in here to pay the difference in the cost of that new order. And then, if you remember, our 380 agreement with the Walmart developer on Bunny Trail, we're trying to pay that off early, so we added, added some money there. And then the first one, I skipped the ones that, that were more or less old business. The first one is the homeless shelter, which we've talked about a number of times. And then the second one, as you know, the Rosa Hartford Community Center, the first time that we went out for bid, we didn't get any bids. This is going to be coming to you on a future agenda item, and it costs significantly more than the original budget, and we're estimating an additional 2.6 million to do that project. You don't have to commit to any of this tonight. That project will be on a future agenda item, so we'll have time to discuss that in detail. But this is one possible, one possible source of funding to deal with that increase in cost. Now, remember, this is all cash. This is not, this is not borrowing any money. And then, you know, we've talked about purchasing an animal services facility in addition with the money that we're receiving from Fort Hood. This is the city, would be the city's contribution to that project. Then what we did, we allocated some of the cash to start some projects in anticipation of a CO issue later this year. So the first thing we had on there was to start designing parks in District Four, and then start the design of the park maintenance facility, and start design on the police evidence storage and parking expansion. And then, the downtown property purchase, that's still perhaps not, may or may not happen. But once again, it has nothing to do with, with any of the projects that we're going to talk about in the, in the next few slides. That downtown property purchase is more on the lines of economic development, if, if we do need to do that. So that would allocate all of the excess fund balance from the previous general fund budget. Then, what, the recommendation is a CO issue that would occur in the next few months and would have no impact on next year's budget. And it's the police parking expansion, the construction, the police evidence storage building, the construction, the park maintenance facility construction, the Skylark FBO, then park construction renovation, obviously the ones that we would have designed for District Four, but they'll be a little bit left over for other park construction or renovation. And the big one on here is the fleet services facility, and this is going to require more discussion, but we wanted to make you aware of this. This has been on the list for a while, but as you heard the other night when Chief Kobinsky was talking about fleet maintenance, we do a lot of work on our fleet out in the parking lot. The fleet has grown, and we don't have room at that facility to expand. So if it's going to enlarge, it's going to have to be somewhere else. So this is one solution for that. Then, if we're going to talk about a GO bond sale in November of this year, these would be the projects. I'll go into City Hall in as much detail as I can in a moment, but then we have the Southwest Branch Library and the Recreation Teen Center. These are things that would require a GO bond election. And as we talked about back in November, for these projects, when you add in the debt service cost, the maintenance and operations, it's about five and a quarter cents on the tax rate. Then, there are other CO projects, more new park development, Veterans Park Downtown, Mohawk Drive, then Fire Station new builds and expansions, and then it costs money to issue, and a tiny bit for contingency. And you add all these up in the previous page, if they were all done, it's about eight cents on the property tax rate. Now, once again, these, there's, it's not possible for us to do all these projects at one time. If we had a successful bond election, we would have to talk about when and how to issue that money. Just because you have a successful election doesn't mean the money's already borrowed. It just gives you the authority to go borrow it, and you generally don't do it all at once. You do it over a period of years, and that helps soften the impact on the tax rate. Now, so what we did when we looked at City Hall to try to come up with a, a number, and I'll have to, to tell you, we did a little bit of backing into it, but we looked at the employees that we thought would go in this facility, allocated 150 square feet a person, and so, and then also for future growth. So it would be 75 over time from the police department. And so you can see, it also includes community development, development services, which is planning, engineering, code enforcement, building inspection, municipal court, which would include a court, a new courtroom, the city manager, legal communications, finance, city auditor, human resources, IT, and we would need a council chambers. And then there's some common area as, as well. I don't think that includes everything, but at that point, we're at about 71,000 square feet. And then we know, we're talking about city property, these are city facilities. There would be demo cost, you've got design cost, and this is an estimate, the one we're using on the 71,000 square feet is $750 a square foot. Then you've got to have furniture fixtures inside. And we came up with an estimated cost of about 66 million, but there are a number of unknowns that we're not, don't have our arms around yet, exactly how many bathrooms in relation to the building capacity, all these ADA requirements, some, some of the, the square footage requirements for the HVAC and server rooms, and just how many conference rooms we'd really need to accommodate staff and citizens. So there, there's a few unknowns, but we think we're pretty close. And I will tell you what would happen when we come up with this, as always, if you, if the design appears it's going to cost more than this, then you talk about, do all of these departments end up going there and talk about what's the most important to go in City Hall? But some more undetermined, the exact size of the courtroom, anything for city council chamber security costs, telecommunication, audiovisual needs, fiber connections, and then customer service areas. So there's a lot of options that you have, and none of them have to be voted on tonight, obviously, but it's, we'd do nothing and just, we'd reallocate the cash on hand that we have and fund pay-as-you-go projects. We can issue the certificates of obligation for these projects or other projects. We think that's about the max that we could issue without impact on the tax rate. And then call an election in, in November or after for general election bonds for the Rec Center, Library, City Hall. And then pending the elections results, if they're positive, we, at some point in the future, issue those GO bonds. And I'd be happy to go back over this or answer any, any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we do move forward with the City Hall and the council chambers will be in the new City Hall, what would happen to this facility?
Well, that, that has to be determined. I don't know that it's a good idea to use it as another city facility. I don't know what we would use it for. I've heard a lot of people say, well, this should be a museum, and, and that sounds great, but you've got operating costs for that. You've still got the same issues that we have. We were talking about spending about two and a half million dollars on this building to fix the heating, air conditioning, to stabilize the third floor. We can't even use half the third floor. It can't be, can't be used because it's unstable. So those issues are still out there. And so, that's a, that's a very good question. That's something that's going to have to be answered.
Thank you. My last question to you is with the $9 million, in case the bond does not pass, could we not utilize that funding to fix the building that we're in now?
Yes, ma'am, and that's where we started about a year ago. We had, we were talking about the CO issue we're talking about now, and we had about two, two and a half million in there to go to this building. And the council's response was, why keep spending money on a facility that's, that's 100 years old? Isn't it time, are we wasting that money? And isn't it time to look at something new?
Right, and the question was, if the bond does not pass, not that we need to stay here.
Got you.
Just in case it does not pass, what's plan B?
Yes, ma'am. Well, if it does not pass, that would be November or later of this year. We would probably have allocated most of that cash for these other projects, so it would be a future, it would be a future allocation.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and city manager and staff, thank you for putting together this slide presentation. It's, it's going to be crucial going forward. When we initially asked for this, well, can I do something real quick, council, if you don't mind? I'd like to move that we suspend the governing standards, just for, I don't anticipate going over, but we only have one issue that we're talking about tonight, and so as not to get wrapped up in trying to make a time. And I'd rather hear from what they have to say anyway, but I move that we suspend that, those, the timeframe.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Remember, you said that.
The motion passes four to one, but taken into consideration of our governor's standards and expectation, council, repetitiveness, repetitiveness is in there. Once a council person says something, it states that you cannot continue to repeat it.
Understood.
So Mayor Protem, the floor is yours.
Okay. Continuing what I was saying, is as far as this is concerned, it looks like we have a, we have a multitude of different ways we can approach these funding needs. And not all of them have to be incorporated into the bond, from what you explained here, and I think you gave a good breakout on, you know, the CO as well as the, as the regular bond election that would need to take place if, if we decide to go that route. I'm in favor of the, I'm in favor of a lot of the projects that I see here. Of course, we have the CIP that we have to keep in mind, too. So some of those things that, like the mayor was saying, if this doesn't come to fruition, and we have to go for it, is that something that would be put onto a CIP if we had to do something for this building in the future, if we didn't have the money any other way?
Right. So if we have the bond election in, in November and it fails, you can't go back for another election for three years. So, yes, we would have to do something for this. We're looking at some alternatives for the heating and air conditioning.
Yeah.
Probably what we would do is you just continue to stay off of half the third floor.
Yeah, see, yeah, and that, to me, is not a viable option to me, that, for one, just to keep, continue to keep paying into a building that's falling apart. At some point, the surgery has to be performed instead of the Band-Aid. And right now, to continue to keep throwing money at, every time I see one of these HVACs that we have to repair, not, or replace, it puts me in the mindset of, what could that money have been spent to do, what could we have done better with that money? So again, I would like to thank you for putting together this presentation. I think we're on track, but one of the main things that we need to take into consideration is exactly what you've done, and the respondents, 117 doesn't sound like a lot, but that's more people that we have here tonight. So, and that, that, that is citizens from around Colleen who are saying what they want to see. And so I think we, we should take that into consideration, and I'm interested to hear what they have to say as well. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Boitt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question for the city manager. If we went forward with the CO, when might that take place?
We'd anticipate council action in just a few weeks, and then, it takes a while to issue it, but we think, I'm going to look at Miranda about 90 days, because that's, yeah, I think that's about right.
Okay. The fleet services facility, are we looking at potential demolishing or just new facility?
No, it wouldn't do any good to demolish it there because our problem is space, so we're going to have to find a new location. We have a few ideas, but, but that, that current site just does not work anymore.
Got you. The maintenance facility, this is for design and engineering?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just, okay, right, sure enough. I'm looking at this.
Well, I'm, wait, hang on a minute, I'm not for sure exactly what you're looking at. Let me pull this up again.
It's going to be slide, I want to say it's slide 10.
Okay. No, so on slide 10, the fleet services facility, that's everything. That's engineering, design, and construction.
Outstanding. Can you talk a little bit more about the, the plan with the park construction renovation?
Yes. So what you see on slide 10, that would be construction money. And it could be, it would probably be some design, but what we're going to try to do is go ahead and get the design on the park areas we've identified in District Four as soon as possible. And then, then that would be construction money for those areas designed, but I'm, I feel certain that's more than enough, so then we would look for some other sites.
Very good. Okay, you know, I also want to echo what Mayor Protem said, the way this is divided out, it's good to see how it can be restructured, to where we can really prioritize the City Hall and the other two projects, and, you know, within the GO bond, so, thank you.
Mr. Kagan, I have another, a new question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
As I was looking at some of the residents' comments for the recommendation in the survey, and also KISD did an excellent job with a bond committee, and that bond committee was a promoter of the bond. That's something I recommend, but what is your perspective on it?
I think a bond committee is great, and it would be very helpful. We're, we're getting a little late for November, but I think that's a very important thing to do.
So one of the ways I was thinking, if the council agree on it, is that each district and at-large representative get two people to bring them. We have a committee, we meet, they get the input from the residents, the council give their direction on how and what they need from that particular committee along with the staff, and we just start constantly using our communication director and any resource we have to push it out. Because what's so significant about this bond is that a City Hall is definitely needed, and the repercussions of it, if it does not pass, it's going to be detrimental to the city. So we need it to pass, move forward. So thank you for answering that question. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I agree with the board, I served on the KSD Bond Steering Committee. We didn't just promote, we also looked at multiple ways to go about doing it. So as, when we first started talking about this, and I totally agree, I just, we remember that this is posturing us for the future and not for the immediate tomorrow, and I like the way that the, the tax burden is going to be spread out over a period of time. And, and I'm glad that you mentioned to everyone that it's, just because we have this long list, whenever it gets finalized, that doesn't mean that we're going to be executing this debt right then and there. Specifically, I know we're revitalizing downtown, and I kind of don't want us to miss out in your, your, your estimates, before we even go through the other process with the City Hall, that we look at a parking garage, perhaps? Is that in your numbers, or is that something we could add?
That is not, and that might be something you would want the TERS to look at, if we're that successful and property values go up that much, and, and there is a, a need for it, I think that's the best avenue.
Okay. Because I know that with the other property going away and the parking focus on the county, and we consolidate city services, we've got to make sure we've got a place for people to park, otherwise that'd be the new. For this building, since it's, since it's on the Texas Historical Registry, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, or is it?
This building?
Yes.
It's not on the, I don't believe it's on the National Register, but I would have to tell you. to tell you, I'd have to check on that.
Okay. Because if it is, then that opens up new opportunities for revitalization, renovation, that's not paid out of, directly out of city funds, but from grants from the national and state, state, with, and that's another thing to add to our Main Street, because we have a historical stop showing the first high school, First Colleen High School. So that is an option, however we use it, but as an, as a possibility. I think that's, that's what, that's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanna kinda get a refresher, because just last month, we were, I don't even remember if we passed, here I'm on the council, I remember, we had 100,000 to do, what was the name of that company, Architecture, something, an estimate of how much it would cost to do the City Hall?
Yes, sir. I think it was 118, I think that it was.
And I can't remember. Are we, are we going through with that, or?
No, the, the council asked to table that to a future agenda. I think it's next, yeah, your next agenda.
Yeah, because I was just trying to figure out, because I know that we did a rough estimate here of $66 million. But is that kind of based on what we think that they'll come back with? Something like that?
No, that's nowhere near as detailed as an architecture firm would bring to us, backed by a whole lot of work. This, this was using some really big numbers and looking at it at a very high level.
Yeah, and I know, I think we, we gotta take this one step at a time, because I know that we're talking about the bond in November election. But I think part of that process is getting more detailed numbers. I think that, you know, we're, we're looking way too far ahead. I think we gotta put something together so that the citizens can see exactly what we're doing. And so I don't know if that item is gonna be brought back next week? Okay, see, didn't look at my agenda there. But that's, I think that's a big priority to just make sure that we either do that or not, and make sure that. The other part of it is, I think a lot of it, and I don't know if we have to dedicate any resources or money to it, but I think a lot of it is just the education, you know, the education of our citizens. Because we, as council members, we're up here constantly, and we know the inner details, you know, like what you just said earlier, you know, I bet you a lot of people don't know that, you know, the third floor is crooked and it's falling apart. And so there is an education factor that has to play. As I look at these comments, too, you know, there's a lot of comments that, and it's just way out there, it's not that, just that they don't know. So I think that, I don't know if that's something that has to come from the staff, the city, or, or something. Because, you know, if we just put this on the ballot right now, I can pretty much bet it ain't, it ain't gonna pass, and we're just wasting our time. So I think part of this process is, how are we gonna educate the people as to why? Why we're needing a City Hall? Why are we needing all these projects? Because like I say, we, as a council, we know the reasons, but I, a lot of citizens that are out here all the time do not know that. And so there needs to be reasons as to why, why are we doing this? So. All right, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. And that is the purpose of the bond committee. It will be working with the council and the staff to promote it, and through whatever district or throughout the city, and also with our communication director, and constantly just put flood in the media outlets with what we're doing and why we're doing it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking of, you brought up this twice. I'm just wondering if, and I see the need for what you're saying, a committee, because it gives you that constant renewal of information from the public. And sure, that's, that's a great thing. I only just wonder, from the staff's perspective, and I heard you say it was a good idea, too, Mr., I'm sorry.
That's okay, you eat.
I haven't eaten all day. But how much time are we looking at from feedback from that? To get that set up, and then have to get feedback from, and then put, and implement that into it? Not to rush it, but at the same time, I'm just wondering, how time exhaustive will that be?
I was looking at it from this perspective, and you can speak after me, Mr. Kegel. It's just like the revitalization team that we just voted in, they promote downtown Colleen. These individuals that, and it may work with what you're saying, bringing back the feedback, but I was looking at any information that we can get out through them, like if they want to go out to different churches in their district, they would be like the spokesperson, persons, as well as the council and the staff, to constantly push it. That is from the perspective, not that people would not come to them and give them input, but this survey had a lot of great information. These are some of the same items that the council and also staff have been talking about from the beginning. So I think we got all the information. I cannot see anything else that, from the survey, that would be different than what we have, and also the residents that come every Tuesday or off and on and give their input. I think we're headed in the right direction. We know there's libraries, we know it's parks, we know it's infrastructure, we know it's trying to bring more activities into the community. We know we need a City Hall. We know there's a lot of building downtown that we want revitalized. How do we work with the small business to give them their own district? Those are things that this council have already spoken about, and I don't think they would bring something that we don't already know that we need. And Mr. Kegel, I'm gonna let you weigh in from your perspective, what you thought the bond committee would mean to help us in that way.
And more specifically, the timing of it. Because I'm in favor of it. I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of that. But the point of clarification was to say, how would it, how would it affect the process as far as timing, as far as resource, because we have limited time, resources, and anything else? To establish a committee, are we waiting for a year to come back from, from committee, or information from committee to go forward?
I think it depends. If you're determined, if there's gonna be an election this November, we kind of work backwards, because we're gonna call an election in August, yeah. And so we'd have the time from whenever a, a committee is appointed, well, they would work all the way up through the election. But you'd wanna do a lot of work pretty quickly, because, and then really get a focused message out, August, September, October. So you kind of work backwards from where you call the, from, from the election to calling the election, and see how, how much time you have to work between now and that time.
Oh, you're welcome, sir, anytime. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. It's no secret that I get, I get excited when we talk about downtown and the potential surrounding this new City Hall project. I lived in Colleen my whole life, and as y'all know, this was originally a school. City Hall doesn't have a home here in downtown, or in Colleen. We don't have a building that was specifically built as a City Hall. So, you know, we go back and we have all these conversations about economic development. And we want private business to invest in our downtown, private dollars. But it's, as a business owner myself, I see it difficult to do that in any city. The number one doesn't have, can't show me their own investment where they're wanting me to invest. You kind of have to lead the charge and put your money where your mouth is. And if you say this is something that you care for, and it's important to you, well, show me. You know, if you're in an old school, because you got in wherever you could fit in, and at the time, I'm sure it made, it made sense, and this is, this is a good building. But you go to some other downtowns, where you go to Temple, you go to Belton, anywhere you go, and you look at their, their city halls or their, their downtown centers, and they're impressive. And then you see the fruits of that, because you see all this investment that follows that. But it's difficult, I think, for us to, to attract that private investment when we're not willing to lead that charge. I think the other benefit around this project, if and when it happens, is that it could potentially free up up to four buildings, just from what you're saying, we would be able to consolidate. We could put another four buildings and properties back on the tax rolls here in downtown, or use those for economic development, if we have some small businesses that could make use of those buildings and garner that private investment back into downtown. So I see a lot more pros than I see cons. Obviously, the one con is, everybody's gonna tell you is, we don't want our taxes to go up. I don't want my taxes to go up, but guess what? They go up anyways. When I worked for the city of Colleen, our tax rate was 76 cents per $100 of value. We're down to, what, 62 cents per $100 of value? It's gone down a lot. So if we're to go back up a few cents, but I know what I'm getting in exchange for my dollars, I'm all for it. You know, it's one thing when a city comes to you and says, hey, look, we're gonna raise your taxes, and you don't know where it's going. I don't, I don't know, I don't see it. You don't see anything tangible. But if you're telling me, we're gonna get a recreation center for my kids, we're gonna get a library in a part of town that doesn't have it, you're gonna get a City Hall and an investment in our downtown, which is gonna help the city in its entirety, okay, well, I'm for it. You know, and you, you see that. If we're able, we talked about communicating that message to the public, it's definitely very important. And if we can do that, just like KISD did it, Temple has done it, a lot of cities have done it, but you have to be able to paint that picture. And I think this is part of it, is letting the citizens and taxpayers know exactly what it is that you would get in exchange for that money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We started this conversation some time back, and the idea of a bond steering committee should have come up earlier. I feel like we're, we're out of order in trying to get this to be palatable, if you will. Another meeting back, I mentioned that we need to define these projects for the public's buy-in. That takes images, that takes videos, that takes a serious commitment into selling this. I'm not into suggesting that it may not pass. It's our job, it's incumbent on us as council members to go to the community and sell this bond, to qualify this bond. On the table today, we talking about COs, we're talking about GO, we're talking about fund balance. A lot of it, you know, it's not mixed up, but it's like, where are we starting to define what we really wanna do? I think it's fair to say that the citizens have gave their input through the survey, council has proposed projects, as well as staff, and it seems that we're all in alignment, council, staff, as well as the citizens. The library, the youth center, park development, City Hall's number four. City Hall's not number 12 or 18, it's literally number four. And folks have, have communicated the, the desire for that. We need to look for the future, you know? We don't need to continue patching up this building and, and piecemealing. You know, we're in 2023, you know, the opportunity is here. And I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I'm ready to get out here and really sell this and qualify it. You know, if I gotta go around and take pictures and do this stuff myself, I believe this is necessary. I believe this is the time to do it. We have great projects, and we have needs in the community for these facilities. Again, how it's restructured with the CO, I think that's outstanding to get some of these, these things moving. But we do need to get a City Hall up, as well as these, the library, and the other, the rec, the rec center, to solve some of the issues that citizens have been talking about for a long time. We have that opportunity, and we're gonna have to sell it. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, I seen the, the square footage for the City Hall, and if we're looking into the future, it's important that we incorporate offices for city council members and the mayor. We're not always gonna be here. The city is gonna grow, and those council members are gonna need the opportunity to meet with their constituents at an office space. I don't meet with constituents in a home because that's a liability, right? And it's not always convenient to go to a coffee shop to meet with the citizen about issues that are very serious things, right? And so forth. To have space or a conference room for city council members, that's gonna be important going forward. So I'd like to see if we can incorporate that. The last thing I wanted to mention, or ask the question was the fund balance. Are we looking for direction on the fund balance proposal here?
Not necessarily tonight, but we'd have, we'll, we'll need it pretty soon. If, if the council is interested and feels good about that, a motion of direction would be great. That would allow us to get started. But the, the real thing is the CO issue, because some of the money we're talking about spending, if we spend it this way, we'd need the CO issue to go, to go along with construction.
To complement it, I got you.
So it might be best to put all this, those two issues on, it can't be the next agenda, but the next workshop.
Understood. And I'm on slide eight, Mr. Kegel. I'm asking if you can kind of give an overview of how these funds would be used for the homeless shelter, Rosa Herford Community Center. Is that for construction? Is that, you know, like, kind of get?
Yes. So the, the homeless shelter, that's a sprung facility. We've shown, we, it's been a few months since we talked about it, but on, on city property, and building the facility that would then be operated by a nonprofit. And then the Rosa Herford, that's only, that's the overage over what we have budgeted right now. And so we'll be bringing the Rosa Herford bid back to you very soon. I don't know exactly which agenda on, but it's, it's in the very near future. And we're gonna have to have some way either to add to that funding, or do something else. Because it's, it's not the type of project, well, we can cut 50% of it. That, well, we could, that's gonna take some work to go back and reallocate and determine what we're doing.
Sure.
So this is the first issue that's really staring us in the face, that's gonna come up soon, is what to do about the Rosa Herford Center and the cost over, I'm not gonna say cost overrun, because we haven't even started. It's just the increase in cost to construct the project.
Sure. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll start with Rosa Herford. So on the center, I know we had CDBG funds, and those funds are about to be expired.
Yes, sir.
So is this money on top of it, or does it replace the funds that we could potentially?
No, it's on top of it. And what we're gonna bring to you is a plan to reallocate some of the other CDBG money, and to get it all spent on the Rosa Herford Center.
Okay.
It's just talking about timing, and some of the parks projects and a few other things we have going that are a little longer than Rosa Herford. So if we get this bid awarded, we can spend the CDBG money fairly quickly.
Okay.
And, and not go over the deadline.
That's a lot of money to have to give back.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I don't know if I asked this before, when we first talked about, but in the timing of the bonds, and in all those projects, I know they have to individually be voted on. Do they all have to be on one, for the GO bonds, do they all have to be on one election, or can we spread them out?
No, number one, they don't have to be on one election, and they don't have to be one proposition on an election.
Okay.
If, if you wanna do it all in November, it could be in one proposition, or two, or three.
Got it. Thanks. And then the other question, I know for the, when we did the KSD bonds, we were told that there was limitations on what the school district could do. I'm not sure where, where it is in the Texas code. It was, there were limitations on what city, city or municipal, municipalities' resources could be used to promote that particular bond. So the bond steering committee was able to have meetings, even whether they were for or against, it was a open discussion that the steering committee hosted. It may have been on school property, but it was, that was about it. Because I don't think the district was allowed to. I don't, does that apply to the city as well?
It does. The city can't spend money to promote, to promote a bond election. We can prepare a flyer with basic facts about the projects and the cost and the debt service, but that's all you, that's all you can do. So what happens a lot of times, so a, a political action committee is, is created to collect funds and go out and promote.
Right.
And there may be someone that would create a PAC to, to be against it as well. But the city can't spend money to promote a bond election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Mr. Kegel, I have two more questions. The, the first one is, I know this building has some serious infrastructure problems, and we're doing the ADA compliance, and we got elevators and everything that we have, we already have put in taxpayer money into this building, and whatever grants, whatever we use. So not to tear it down, but when you look at it from a perspective of, of an educational tool, if we could find a way, and I'm not, even though if this is possible, I'm just saying, moving forward, since we're discussing the building and the new City Hall, do you see any way, or any type of usage for this building in the future if we, when the, if the bond passes?
As we said, or not, I, I don't have a use for it. But I also don't think anyone, I haven't heard anyone suggest tearing it down. All I've, only thing I've ever heard are people saying it needs to be preserved.
Right.
But then, the, the exact use, I do not know.
Because money still will Because money still will have to bring it up the code anyway, if, upstairs and everything.
If someone was gonna use it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and back to the, um, I believe any, um, this is just a statement, I just believe that any opportunity where we can get community residents, the community and residents involved in anything that we're asking them, as, um, was stated, to invest in, and if they're, we're paying taxes on it, what's significant about, even though KISD used a bond committee, I think just having residents to sell the city is significant to me. Because how can you sell something you don't believe in? And it's only seven of us, and the more people we have, the more the word will get out. Because we cannot touch every individual resident within the city of Colleen, but the individuals that we do choose to be on this committee, they should be very actively involved in the community and organizations, and they're constantly sharing our information, so it can pass, 'cause we know we need it. So, I can agree to disagree and respect, um, each individual answer or response to it, but a committee, in my opinion, is, is much needed to help us sell it. And with that said, Councilmember Segar.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick question, uh, when we look at the, uh, GO bonds, and we look at the tax rate, the impact that's gonna have, that's the impact that's gonna have to our citizens, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, and, and I'm not good at math, I'm just trying to calculate this, I know our current tax rate, it's what, seventy-point-zero-four percent, or?
No, sir, it's about sixty-two cents.
Oh, it's even less than that?
Yes, sir.
So, we take sixty-two cents, what we're adding to it is point zero-five-two-five, is that how that works?
That's, that's for, um...
The total for the GO bond, for the city also?
And, and that includes operations and maintenance as well?
Yeah, so would, it would add about, is, is that how I'm reading, fifty-two?
Five-point, five-point-two-five.
Less than point zero-five-two. Do we know what?
It's a nickel.
Yeah, it's a nickel, so ultimately, 'cause I think that, that's kinda where we need to make sure that people understand, because anybody, you know, when we think of bond, it's like, what is that gonna be, I'm gonna pay more, more money. Do we have an estimate of how much that would affect, you know, citizens as far as on their property tax, you know? On an average, I think our average homes in Colleen, what is it, about two-twenty-five or something like that?
Um, yeah.
Hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a year, based on two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house.
So...
Thank you.
So, a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, so about ten bucks a month, ten bucks a month. So, I just wanted to make sure I was reading these numbers, 'cause I hate a whole bunch of zeros, I can't figure that out. I only work with big numbers. Thank you.
Um, I, I think we've heard, um, Mayor, we heard you. We, we, we heard what you said, uh, the committee, um, I, and I, I'm, I'm in favor of it, I just wanna make sure that it doesn't slow down the process, because a lot of times, doing things by committee, I know that we're a democracy and we have representation here, and we, but sometimes when we get overbloat ourselves in decision-making, we can have that paralysis by analysis with the committee. I am in favor of having it, and so with that, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion of direction to, to establish committee, uh, and have that done within like, uh, of how the staff sees it fit to get this moving in that direction. I have something else, too. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no?
No.
Thank you. A motion of direction passes by to zero. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I also like to speak to the usage of this building. I, I think, I think it, I understand where people are coming from, when they don't, when they see something that is, been a part of their heritage, a part of their history, they wanna hold on to it for, you know, forever. Um, one of the things you have to be careful for, and I'll just say it, it's, it's like, you know, you can start throwing good money after bad, and if we're establishing something that is more useful for our, for our city, and a more, um, user-friendly area and whatnot, I, I think that one of the, that, one of the uses could be here, if you don't wanna tear it down, because I wouldn't, I, I'm not standing on here and grandstanding and saying, uh, tear it down, but if it got torn down, I'd be like, okay, progress moves, that, that's, things go away, and we get new stuff. Um, but I understand the sensitivity of keeping something like this, because your grandmother, your grandfather went to school here, or your, or your father or your mother in some cases, some of us are old enough to be that. But, point being is, an established use could possibly be for storage, so you don't have to put the, the, the usage for, you know, HVAC and the things like that, and, uh, you know, you don't have constant people, you know, coming in here to where you had to keep them either warm in the winter or cool in the summer. So, I, I think that that might be something that I could see as far as a usage for this building, as, as having it as some type of storage facility. We're actually using the police, the old police facility right now, doing the same thing. So, I would, um, you know, with minimal upgrades, minimal things, uh, the construction to this building, I think that that could be something that is reasonable if we went forward. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mayor Protem, and, um, if there was another usage, if we would keep it, it could be a small business. We, if, we gonna have to fix it up if someone come in here, utilize the business, the offices for small businesses, for, for, uh, to help a business just trying to start up. But this, if we leave this room just like it is, it would be such an educational opportunity for youth to come here and have the opportunity, have mock city council meetings, like a political class, or history class. I know, I know I'm not a hoarder, but I, I just, I just, this building has so much history, and I think there are so many other positive outcomes for it, but that's just my opinion. But we have time to talk about it. With that being said, we're going to move on to citizen comments, and we will start with Mr. Ronnie Russell. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Russell. Good evening, how are you, sir?
Say nothing, I've, you know, been here for a while, um, but definitely love the information that was put out, um, because a lot of the stuff that you were communicating about, we're just now hearing it for the first time. Um, and I do believe that this would be a great thing for the city, um, not to echo, but to echo. If we expect the citizens to want to invest into a city, the city should also invest, uh, itself, and having the city hall, um, consolidated, the rebuilt and consolidated city hall, co-located with the Bell County Annex, those two are, um, uh, destinations now for those particular areas. And if the city, the consolidated city hall does go where the police station is gonna be, uh, would be great, and also even further down the line, possibly think about having a vertical infrastructure as far as parking goes, which would also be a great thing when it comes to parking for the Bell County Annex, as well as the new city hall, uh, building, uh, as well. And my thoughts as far as this building right here, of course, my first initial thought was a museum, but then hearing what the Mayor Protem, as far as, uh, as far as the storage things go, which, which is a great idea and another use for the facility, or possibly creating some sort of, uh, culture center here, um, at this location, because this is already have the seats and, and, and the dais can also go flat and turn to a stage for the children to come in, uh, and learn about city government, and also learn from that perspective. Um, um, so it'll be kinda two-fold when it comes to that, and, and the park and everything, um, over there in District Four would be a great thing for the children, um, 'cause when my son came here, we was over on that side, and shoemaker was the only thing that you're gonna talk about, that you're gonna do on that end, so it'd be a great thing, especially flying into the city, and they're able to do things on that side, so the economics is now circulating on that side. But, um, I think these two bonds would definitely be beneficial for the city, uh, as well as being beneficial for the citizens as well. Uh, it will create a new economic structure, especially when the Bell County Annex comes into this area, so now the restaurants and everything, so there's second and third, um, uh, first, second, and tertiary effects, uh, to that, uh, to those two new buildings coming down here, the restaurants, and now it's gonna have more, uh, foot traffic, the gas stations on this end is gonna have more foot traffic, and whatever they're building on, uh, rancier is going to increase the amount of foot traffic, so when the new soldiers come in, and now the Fort Hood is gonna change, so if change is starting on the installation, then coming off the installation, the change should be at least mutual at some part, um, because now when the circulation of people coming in and out of this area, looking at something different will allow them to want to stay and not take their economics out of the city. There's already a lot of economic spillage between the cities itself, but now they have, um, a lot more incentives to just stay instead of finding ways to just go. Um, so, um, I, I like what, what, uh, I heard, um, and I understand that the steering committee is, is gonna steer, you know, uh, how this goes. So, it's great what y'all talking about, the steering committee is really gonna, uh, take some of the ideas and try to create what's gonna be best for the citizens, and I do think that this, uh, on the ballot for elections, I, I do think is gonna pass, because, uh, once it passes, it's gonna be beneficial all the way across the board, um, not just for the citizens, but for the children that is going to graduate here, so you're able to, uh, have access to a lot more talent management to stay in this area, because as they grow up and as they become, uh, citizens, um, of adulthood, so now they're communicating with what they remember what the city looked like. A lot of times, you're remembering what the city looked like by someone else's lens, but now you're creating new lens and new optics, uh, for the, uh, for the area as well. Um, and my last thing, I also think that, um, with being new, uh, changing Gray Street to Main Street will be a great thing for the city, because if I'm on Main Street, I have the Bell County Annex on Main Street, I have a brand-new city hall off Main Street, so now it becomes a destination by street alone, just like ten years from now, they won't be calling it Fort Hood, just like ten years from now, if the street changed to Main Street, they won't remember what happened on Gray Street, Gray Street back then, but they're creating new opportunities and, and, and creating new, uh, experiences on Main Street, because there's gonna be new buildings, so that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper.
Can he respond? Steve?
He's always a tough act to follow. Good evening, Mayor, um, Council, um, my name is Condes Cooper, new owner of three-zero-eight East Avenue D. Um, I'm also going to be a high proponent of, one, the city of Colleen, I'm a native, um, and then now the downtown area, and so to Mr. Boyd's point in reference to council taking the initiative to go out and promote this idea, um, I try to go Facebook Live every time, just to make sure that people are understanding the importance and not just having opinions on what's going on, um, and so, yes, understanding and promoting that. So, I think even with the Downtown Merchants Association, and then the new Downtown Advisory Committee, we're going to be full force in steering the conversations about the downtown Colleen area and what those changes are gonna mean. Um, Councilman Alvarez came to the Merchants Association meeting and talked to us about what that looks like as far as the concept of building a new facility, what that does for those of us that are investing a lot of money into these properties down here, and knowing that that investment will turn into, um, we're gonna get our ROI back, and we know that it's going to create that foot traffic, it's going to create a new culture, it's going to start a new environment and a new conversation about downtown Colleen. Um, and then I think we're all excited to see our property values increase, on top of, I think, just lately, the change in conversation about having active business owners investing in the area and promoting the idea. But yes, of course, the, having activities in the District Four area, making sure that everybody has access to those resources and that public access, um, to activities. Um, but yeah, we're just all excited about that investment, again, to what Mr. Alvarez was saying when he came and spoke to us, and really did a great job in breaking down what that would mean in the city, the city creating a consolidated, uh, multi-department bit structure, then being able to put those other properties back on the market, um, because, like you said, if you keep this building, you're gonna have to invest those dollars into this property anyway, and so that doesn't help on our end as we continue to invest, um, in the downtown area, and so, again, increased property value means increased value in those business owners, it creates that stronger morale for the downtown area, which means not only will we build, uh, some business owners have bought multiple buildings just recently in, um, the downtown area, so it's going to just continue that morale as we start to talk about what, what's gonna be done with the TERS fund, what Fort Hood, um, is going to be doing in that area. Um, so we're definitely excited to have that conversation, to put new properties back on the tax, uh, bracket, which would encourage, um, new businesses, even bigger businesses to come into the area, um, and that's when you guys start looking towards your EDC and your other Chamber of Commerce, to really start going out and seeking new companies and new ideas for, um, your thing, and so shout out to Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce, I'm sure we're all excited about having that conversation about, that's when you, Mayor, um, when you brought up, reaching out to those organizations that are active in the community, and finding ways of steering that conversation, educating the community, um, and really investing in our city. So, I'm excited, um, y'all let us know what we need to do to help. Um, again, thank y'all again.
Thank you. Melissa Brown.
Before I get started, I just need one clarification. On the explanation for Mohawk Drive, it says the project is a point, approximately three-point-four-five feet long. Um, I'm gonna guess that's a typo for nine million dollars, um, so just, when the information, if it does go out to the public, I think maybe, uh, making sure that gets corrected, 'cause that's very confusing. Um, so, I wanna start off by saying that tax rate, tax rate actually, yes, has gone down, but valuations have gone up, and the more that we increase valuation in downtown, the more those businesses will pay in taxes. Our tax levies have increased. Doing this, our tax levy will increase even more, because now we're bringing the tax rate up along with the increased valuation on houses. Um, I guess since it was brought up earlier, even though it wasn't on the agenda, the three-hundred-one-thousand dollars that was there for, uh, the rollover money for, lack of better phrasing, for the public to understand, from the fund balance, that would be put into District Four Parks. It's a District Four Park design, so is that just to go in and do the designs for all of those identified parks, or would that be to actually stand up any of those parks? Uh, because my, my thing is, we just passed a park...
Ms. Brent, one moment, since we're going off script tonight, Mr. Cagle will answer that question.
Oh, thank you.
If you don't mind.
Oh, I don't mind at all.
That's for construction design, for plans.
Okay, so that would be both for, for multiple parks in District Four, then that three-hundred-one-thousand?
Two, two that were identified, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle.
I, I'm going to respectfully disagree with the prior speakers as far as the need for an immediate, uh, new city hall and where it should be located. When we were going through finishing our comp plan process, one of the things the consultant advised us against specifically was putting the county annex where the first national bank was. And when we talk about later on in, in the presentation for the CO bonds, extending Veterans Park, that was supposed to be in lieu of having the county annex there, so we were going to take that property and expand it out there if we didn't use it for some other purpose. So, I don't think that putting another government building that's going to take the tax burden and shift it to the surrounding businesses as the property value increases in downtown is, is fair to them. I also don't know that that is the best location for it, or that we need that at this time, we've spent millions of dollars... We've spent millions of dollars, three, three years ago. We were across the street, the Utilities Collection Building, because this room we're sitting in right now was being renovated. We have done some work to the upper levels, not nearly to the extent that we need to. But it was a few million dollars, and we have a few million dollars that were put into this year's budget and CIPs to shore up the third floor and to do the HVAC unit. That was under the proposed $17 million CO bond. And we did buy the church where the Colleen Arts and Activity Center is right now. If I remember correctly, that originally the intent was, that was supposed to be the combined city hall. But instead of spending $2 million on a new homeless shelter, that pays for the new parks maintenance facility. The $2 million is exactly what that would have come out of the bond. We have homeless shelters right now. We don't have this nonprofit set up yet. We don't know what it's going to look like. Let's take the money we have and allocate it to the things that we need and we know we need right now. And then I would still love to know where the money is that Fort Hood was going to pay us to help fix our animal facilities. So that was supposed to be $3.5 million over two years. So I don't understand why we would put almost $1.6 million into a new animal services facility.
Let, let's, so we, and I won't stop you for, I know you probably have some other things to say, but just to stay in line with the responses so we don't have to go back and remember anything. I, I see the city, assistant city managers.
Okay.
Fort Hood is going to give us $750,000 over two years, so in fiscal year '24 and '25. And so this is the amount the city would pay towards any new facility.
Okay, so that changed from the original, because I specify, I have a copy still of the original agreement we looked at, and the presentation was, was 1.5.
I think she's mixing capital and operations money is what's happening. They are, they are paying us. We've added a number of personnel in animal control. And so I think that's the operational money that you're talking about, because it was always $750,000.
Okay, well, I'll look at it. I would, just to keep things moving, I want to go through every little part of this, but I know Councilwoman Boyd and I have talked about this. I want to support the parks, I do, but not at half of the cost of all of the CO bonds that we would issue. Not when, if you add up to three fire stations that we desperately need, they come to less than $25,000. Less than half of what we would be recommending for new parks. I would strongly and adamantly argue and fight against any bond right now for parks, especially in light of the fact that we have this new parkland dedication. Next week, I don't know if, it's not this coming week, but the following week, there's 220 acres that's coming to the city again for a PUD on Bunny Trail that will bring park space or money in lieu of. So can we give it a chance to work before we start taking out debt for that? I will end with this. As far as, yes, it, it is nice to have a conference room to meet with the citizens. We've always had one here at City Hall. We actually did all the way up until last May. The mayor has an office now, and moves had to be made. And that conference room has been repurposed for staff because staff needs to be able to work. I don't think adding all of that just for meeting space is necessity. Yes, ma'am?
We still have the city council conference room on the third floor, so it still is intact.
So we, we have a meeting room, and all the discussion about needing someplace where council can meet if they want to, we have a place. And I understand it's not the nicest, newest-looking place, but it doesn't have to be nice, new, and shiny. I will end with this question. Why the rush? Why do we have to do this in November? The last time we were here talking about this specifically, it was, this is just an idea, it's a concept, the council hasn't decided whether or not we want to do a bond. Council, and I appreciate, has just agreed to allow there to be a bond steering committee. But a bond steering committee is not a group of cheerleaders, and they're not people who should be rushed either. I don't think that November needs to be the timeline. It's not going to affect anything in this fiscal year. When the budget was passed this fiscal year and the $17 million CO bonds were recommended, it was said they probably wouldn't be taken out until August. That would still be before any bond would be able to come in November anyway. Why the rush for November?
Councilmember Boyd?
I'll actually pass.
Councilmember Alvarez?
I was just going to provide my own response, and Ms. Brown asked why the rush. And I can only speak for myself. As somebody who's lived here in Colleen since 1978, I'm tired of seeing this can get kicked down the road. So that's just me personally, that's not here for the council. But that's my response to you is I'm tired of seeing this can kick down the road, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Boyd?
Madam Mayor, I've been here since 1987. I haven't seen too much change outside of our population. And it's time for us to get serious about moving the city forward. I don't get calls from citizens complaining about the potential bond, not one. I hear from citizens who are excited about the potential to move this city forward because it's been too long. So at some point, you know, we need to really double down, get serious about how we want to do this and execute. Perhaps we need, you know, I'm not going to say we need to, but it seems as a temperature for us to kind of slow it down a little bit. Whatever it takes, this needs to go through, this needs to happen for the city of Colleen. That's one of the reasons why I ran for council member. That's one of the reasons why I'm still here, to move this city forward. Okay, we've had councils in the past that took on the hard issues, okay? Getting a civic center, getting the airport, different large projects. Those take time, and they take a lot of effort, they take a lot of buy-in. But there's folks that stood behind that, and they pushed it. And eventually, these things became reality. And that's where we are with this new city hall. That's where we are with this parkland development that's needed. That's where we are with the library that's needed and a rec center, which we do not have at a population of 100 and almost 60,000 people. We're there. We're making incredible investments in the fire department and our police department and public works. Let's complement our quality of life. Let's consider a facility for our citizens to come to, to take care of city business. That's nice, and that is appealing. Let's provide offices for council members when the city's at 250,000. We will get there at some point. We will get there. We should prepare now. And so that's why I strongly pushed this bond. I was one of the people that signed with Mayor Pro Tim on that agenda item because we can keep pushing it down the road and continue to put money somewhere else. We have the opportunity to, to, to reset, and so that's all I got to say about that.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I, I guess, they summed it up pretty well. And I, it's not just their response, and I, I do take the words that you say because I don't think that we should all be on the same sheet of music. I anticipate that there's going to be people who are saying, yeah, why the rush? And I'm not saying it's a rush. When I brought this forward, when Mr. Boyd and I brought this forward last year, it was, it was exploratory. It was to find out whether we had the appetite, whether we had the financial aptitude for it. And I think that what we're seeing now is that we do, those things do measure up. And so there are some things that we do need to launch forward to because the, the metal's hot, the iron's hot. Because if you look around the central Texas area and the development as it takes place, if we continue to lag, if we continue to be the laggard in, in, in progress as far as building up our own, and to the other counties, to the other citizens' comments, and investing in ourselves, we're going to fall exponentially further behind. And so I, I don't want to see that happen. And just like Mr. Boyd, as well as the mayor and anybody probably up here, you run for office to inspire change that you need. If you already have somebody in there doing a job, yeah, you can go on and do whatever you want to do. But the reason I'm here, the reason I'm sure Mr. Boyd, Mr. Cigar, and the mayor and others, is because it's time to, it's, it's time to progress us into where we deserve to be as the, as the host for Fort Hood, as the largest city. And, and I've said, I've been saying this for years, it's the largest city between Austin and Dallas. We're missing that. Population-wise, we're the largest city between Austin and Dallas. It's time to start acting like it. It's start, it's time to start investing in ourselves, giving ourselves the quality of life that we deserve. So it's not a rush per se as much as it is to say, okay, the next bond election can be held in November. What can we do to possibly get that there? So it's not a rush as much as, that's an opportunity as things start to measure up to, this is something we might want to do, that we start aligning ourselves and giving ourselves a, a step-by-step guidance up into that date. Now, that doesn't mean that it's going to go through, doesn't mean that we're even going to put it on the ballot. But as far as what you can hear tonight, I think from the council members and some citizens, is that, yeah, let's, 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 let's go, let's go for it. But I can respect others who might want to say, you know, I, I just don't feel, I, I think we're moving too fast. I can respect that, but I just, I respectfully disagree with that. So thank you again for your comments. And to, I what? I actually pushed a button, Mayor. To respond to the other citizens about the, the Main Street initiative. I think that's something that Councilwoman Jessica Gonzalez, she was taking on, and she was looking into that.
It's already-
Mr. Adams as well. So I know that's not on the agenda, but that is something that is being looked into as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Mrs. Brown, what you said is true from a perspective. And I know that there are other residents probably feel the same way that you feel. I don't have the number, but I know that is a strong possibility. And that goes back to the bond committee, goes back to the council on how we have to sell this bond, not to be selling it, but to sell it for understanding. And when they give their input, whether we agree or disagree, we have to be ready to respond in a way for understanding. This is why we do what we do. It's not a disagree or agree. It's about us explaining in detail why this is significant for all residents in the city of Colleen. And I thank you for your comments. That makes us think now, we really need to start thinking, if we have a former council member that's challenging us on this bond, how do other residents that may not come to a council meeting, may not read the paper, may not look at us on TV, how we are going to sell it? And I thank Councilmember Boyd and Mayor Pro Tim for your response and Councilmember Alvarez. But we really got our work cut out for us in selling this bond. And I wanted to address one more thing. I do have a office. I quit my job to become a full-time mayor. I quit my job because I take this job serious, because I belong to the people. From what perspective? Any event that's within an eight to five or eight to nine, I'm there. My calendar is full, and if I'm not in the office, I am at some event, whether it's on Fort Hood, a school, city of Colleen, Salado, at a conference. I'm, I'm about the business of the city. And one more correction. City council do have availability to offices on the third floor, even when I was a council member. We have that space if we choose to use it to bring residents here. Maybe we could have done a better job of sharing that information, but we do have that space. Not saying that this new facility, when the bond passed, I'm thinking positive, when it passed, that it do not need other office space. So I'm still for that too, but we do have it if a council member would like to utilize it upstairs. With that being said, Mrs. Josie McKinney? And if I pronounced it wrong, wrong, please correct it when you get up here. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi there. Yeah, I'm Josie McKinney. I am the president of the Downtown Merchants Association. I'm also the chair on the Heritage Preservation Board. Equally as important, I am a property owner. I, I own a, and I have a restaurant and a business in the heart of downtown. Let's Eat Texas. And in fact, I'm in the process of buying another building now. That's how invested I am in this downtown. I could have lived anywhere, I could have moved anywhere when I left Alaska. And this is, this is where, this is where I wanted to be. And I wanted to be here in great part due to what was happening in the downtown. This current city hall is a gem. It's, it's, it's not a teardown. But it, it doesn't facilitate the city hall, it doesn't facilitate the city offices that you all need in this growing city. So I think, I think it could be something in the private sector. Or, you know, if the city can afford to keep it and maintain it with all the other things going on, awesome. I mean, maybe it could be some kind of educational facility. But private sector could look at it too. It needs to be, it needs to be maintained and preserved. So we need a facility that the citizens can come to, to do all of their city business. We need a place that you all can do business with the, with the citizens as well as each other. I mean, to have to drive all the way across town to have a meeting with another city employee just seems crazy to me. I mean, everywhere I've ever lived, there's been a, a place where all the city workers could come together and work. And you guys are all over town. And all of those different facilities and all that different maintenance and all those different costs, and then the renovations that this building needs, it's a lot. And if you take all of that and pool that, all of a sudden, the cost of this new facility seems a lot smaller. You know, I think one of the things that we spoke about at the last merchants meeting, as somebody mentioned, when Councilman Alvarez was, was with us, was the idea that this has to be explored. But bigger than that, it needs to be done in the right order. You guys talk a lot about order of operations and doing things in the right order. And yet, here's this architect, and you need the, you need to have a real number of what this is going to cost so that you can move forward in a way that makes sense and you can justify that cost and know that the number is accurate. I know $100,000 plus is a lot of money, but it's a drop in the bucket compared to what you guys are talking about spending on this facility. That's a must-do. I mean, as a citizen, listening to all the things that are happening and all this exploration you guys are doing and spending this money, I think that that's really key, that, that you revisit that topic and get that back, you know, back up to a vote. So, you know, I mean, in closing, I just feel like consolidation and continuing to revitalize and continuing to work on our downtown and create, create a place that people want to be. Not just us, but people want to come here. We can have that, and we're working towards that. And your, your, your business owners and, and your building owners are working towards that. And, you know, we want to be in this with you. So I think somebody else said, tell us what to do. And, yeah, tell me what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlos Pineda? Did I mess it up too bad?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city manager and staff, Carlos Pineda. I'm, I own, well, I'm one of the owners of Hustle House Realty. We own 329 East Avenue D, and we just closed on 416 North Gray Street. It sounds funny to say this, but I want you guys to increase my taxes. I want my property values to go up. I need all of this to come up because with, well, just to recap, I bought a building in, in, in a downtown historic area because I thought it would be cool, right? I love Colleen. The Army brought us here in 2011. And I can remember being a soldier in Germany, and everyone says, don't live in Colleen. Go to Harker Heights, Belton, Nolanville. And I said, you know what? My pocket is taking me to Colleen, so it is what it is. We haven't moved out. We're still in Colleen. We own multiple properties, multiple businesses in Colleen. We're not going anywhere. But we need y'all's buy-in. We need y'all's buy-in. We need, my wife and I and my mother-in-law, we're always downtown eating lunch. And this lady stopped, broke our heart. She stopped us and she said, I'm on empty, I'm looking for like health services. I just got released from the hospital. I, I need oxygen. Do y'all know where this is? And we're like, well, the court is here. That other bill, so you know what I mean? She had nowhere to go. She says, I'm out of gas, I have no money, I don't know what to do, I need oxygen. And I was like, I'm sorry, we don't have like a consolidated area for you to go. There should be, there absolutely should be. But I would like to see a cost analysis. I would like to see what it would cost. We're talking 66 million, we don't know if that's a real figure. And we have multiple buildings around downtown. What's it going to cost to maintain those over the years? This one versus, you know, the, the one-stop shop that we're looking for. I don't think citizens are opposed to raising taxes as long as we know we're getting what we're. I don't want my taxes to go up and then my roads to still be bad. You know what I mean? That's kind of where we're at. So a cost analysis, is my taxes going up? Why? If I don't vote for this bond, my taxes will likely go up anyway because all these buildings need money. How much is that going to be? Let me make the decision. Let me make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker of the night is Mr. Gabriel Mataba? I know. Why should I, I could take him from you. Hey, sir, how are you?
Good evening, City Councilmembers. How, uh, just wanna say thank you so much for letting me have the opportunity. And I want to tell you guys just a short little story and I'm gonna be quick because, well, I don't have a timer, so I'm gonna just keep going until...
Sir, there's no time, but you can move your microphone.
Okay, can y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
You know, I just want to tell you a quick little story. Um, I was raised here in Colleen since I was three years old. And my very first job was working at the Clements Boys and Girls Club right down the street. And it was be, and it was through a Texas workforce program, um, that allowed, uh, kids to have their first-time jobs, working in, you know, their first-time job, getting job experience. It is important that we not forget the north side of Colleen. You know, in, I, I, I graduated from Texas A&amp;M Central Texas and there's something that's called the signaling theory in economics. And what it does is whenever, uh, a, a big business decides to purchase or do something in a specific area, it notifies the other business, hey, what is going on there that we do not know about? So I believe that it's time that we continue to move forward and push forward every single initiative that is gonna improve the north side of Colleen. You know, bringing, you know, more businesses, incentivizing them more, uh, to bring more stuff to this side. I'm tired of driving twenty-seven minutes to the grocery store, you know what I'm saying? We need a grocery store. That's gonna, that's gonna show, it's like Mr. Alvarez said, it's, you know, you gotta put your money where your mouth is. You know what I'm saying? And so, my heart, my passion is in north side of Colleen, we can't forget about it. You know, uh, pharmacy, you know, making sure that the residents here have those things, you know? And I think something that we often forget is, is that, um, we can't forget the people that needed the most. North side of Colleen is where most of the neediest people are. And so, you know, yeah, you know, people might say, well, it's the city hall, they just want a better office. No, it signals to the other businesses that we're growing and we're taking this place seriously, come and invest. Carlos, I want your property values to go up. I don't have a, uh, you know, Ms. McKinney, I want your property values to go up as well. And because it benefits us in the long term. Okay, and, and I just want to say this, you know, and, uh, I ain't gonna, I'm usually, I'm usually preaching at church, so that's why I might be a little passionate. But I just want to say something and, and in the, and this, I just want to conclude with this. The time is always right to do what is right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The time is right to always do what's right. Okay, well, council, we have given the residents that showed up and I know I said that, um, you had to turn in your form before we started the meeting. But if there is anyone else that would like to speak because you have taken out of your time to come out tonight to give your input, all you have to do is come up to, fill out a form over there, I know we got some. And after, after, the echo from my counterpart, my right hand, it's my right. Uh, we're gonna allow you to fill it out afterwards, okay? So if you can speak in the right hand, um, just state your name.
Hi, I'm Toni Ringo, how y'all doing?
We're doing great, always good to see you.
Good to see you all as well. As you all know, I was one of the recipients for the Opera Grant, um, that allowed me to purchase three properties right here in downtown Colleen. If you step outside of the city hall, you'll see Space Create right there. It has been a wonderful ride, um, it has been a lot of work, a huge undertaking, but we are starting to build momentum and I'm really optimistic about the future. When I went to purchase downtown, a lot of people in the area was like, why would you do downtown Colleen? Why, and I said, well, why not? And now, I'm also a Realtor, I don't know if you guys know that, but knowing and watching all of the people from everywhere that are now coming in and they're trying to buy properties, are purchasing properties, we have people from across the nation that come in. I just helped at an event, it was a, it's called Fempreneur, it was a seminar and expo this past weekend. And I had a lady fly in all the way from Las Vegas to come to downtown Colleen to, to attend the seminar and expo. I'm telling you all, we're on the right track. I am born and raised in Austin, Texas, so I'm no stranger to big city and I'm no stranger to hard work. And I promise, I tell everyone, listen, just give us a couple of years and we're gonna be really, really growing. I love what you guys are trying to do with downtown Colleen. Um, I'm gonna do more research on some of the specifics because I'm not gonna get up here and ramble. But what I will say is that overall, the revitalization is going to be fantastic. It's going to get a lot of these vacant buildings filled, it's gonna get new infrastructure in and we're gonna have new businesses. And before you know it, everybody is gonna be coming to the city of Colleen. I truly believe it. I want to thank you all for what you're doing for downtown and me being a business owner myself, taking that leap to purchase property, I have no regrets. So again, um, thank you all for what you're doing and please, let's keep it up.
Thank you, thank you. So, one of the things that I have heard tonight is, uh, downtown Colleen, District Four. But in order to sell this bond, we have to really also focus on District Three and also District Two because we're gonna need buy-in for, from everyone. So, we need to really come up with projects that's gonna have a, a effect on all individuals living in the city of Colleen quality of life. And one of my big things are libraries. Because I know over here on West Cliff, all the way over there, we can get a library and an activity center on that side of town. I mean, there's so many ways we can use one building and have it, uh, for multiple use. So I'm hoping that in District One, Two, Three, Four, the farther we go out, we can have a library and a activity center for our youth. And I think that's just one building, just using it for two events. Because that's important to have more libraries. And with that being said, we're gonna have, uh, round five. Uh, Councilmember Adams, then Councilmember Segura and then Councilmember Boyd. And I'm gonna go ahead on and put Mayor Protim after Councilmember Boyd.
Madam Mayor, I apologize, I thought we were coming to a close.
No, 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 that's what he's trying to do. He's just saying call, adjourn the meeting because he came to hear the residents.
So I was gonna rise, so I'd point a personal privilege, uh, because I thought we were closing. Today's March thirtieth and I know you already declared Leslie Hinkle Day, but this is Ms. Hinkle's very last meeting with the city council.
Right, we were gonna say that at the end, but that's okay, that's okay. We, we're just trying to...
That's thank you.
Okay, well, let's go on and give her a hand. Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Hinkle, now this is not the close of the meeting because I still got more councilmembers wanting to speak, but since they brought it up, Mrs. Hinkle, we would like to thank you for your commitment and your service to the city of Colleen. Uh, and I'm putting this on the, uh, like the, uh, how can I work this in, uh, open meeting act. And we're talking about the bond and you have, uh, Ms. Hinkle have worked with the bond. So, I'm just clarifying that, Paul, this is an open meeting act now, I'm trying to wrap it together. And you have contributed so much. And when I see Mrs. Cooper and, uh, Mrs. Reno, uh, and all the businesses that have come through here and that you have touched their lives and they're here testifying and all the great things that you, you and Ms. Kate and Mr. Rebell and your team worked so hard. You, you will do great wherever you go. And this is council, uh, we thank you, we're grateful for you and we wish you the best in your endeavor. Councilmember Segura?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, I just want to say thank you to everybody that spoke. I, I know that, uh, we've been down this route many, 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 many years, you know, as long as I've been on the council. And I can tell you right now, I just want to say, I've never seen the momentum that I've seen here, uh, present and moving forward. And that's the type of momentum that we need to keep going. And I think that, you know, we can change the face of the city, of the downtown. I appreciate you guys investing in our downtown because it's, it's truly gonna, to make a difference. What I'm saying as you guys speak, because in the past, it's always been, council, what are you doing? Council, what are you doing? And what I'm saying is, what are you guys doing? You know, you guys, uh, with the help of you guys, this'll happen. If it's thrown back on the burden of the council, it ain't gonna happen. And I know that ain't gonna happen because you guys are truly invested in our downtown, uh, Colleen and all that. And so I think that, you know, we got something going here and we just can't let it go because I know we've been down this road many times and it just fizzles because it's a challenge. But I think that having you guys truly invested in it's gonna make a true difference. And I truly appreciate you guys coming up. We just need to continue spreading the word. And remember what I said earlier, the key is gonna be that education part. It's gonna let people know and you guys are gonna be the, what do you call them? The, 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 the ambassadors, thank you, the ambassadors of this. It can't come from us. I mean, we're gonna do our part, but we need you guys to be part and ambassadors and let everybody know. Because if it gets on the ballot, I'd hate to see that momentum just drill, go, go down, dribble away. So again, thank you for what you do, appreciate it and continue doing what you guys do.
I was just gonna echo what, uh, the former mayor said. Uh, thank you all for coming up.
Well, tonight, um, we have given a motion of direction to, um, the city manager to go and come back. I'm not sure the criteria is how, the criteria is on how we're going to set up this bond committee. Uh, please stay tuned to our colinetexas.gov website. We're gonna constantly be putting information on there. I was speaking to the city manager in reference to where we have another bond meeting, but we have to move aggressively because, uh, if we're gonna put it on the November ballot. So we want you to know, the council, that we really, we heard you tonight. Thank each individual that, uh, took the survey and gave us your input and we will take that under consideration. And then the last thing I will say to you is this, that we, the council, every decision that we make moving forward and have done in the past, it is for the good of all residents. We do not take this lightly about the bond and any increase in tax or fees. Well, you may look at today, we're looking ten and twenty years down the line. We will no longer sit on this council. And the one thing I always ask myself, what is your legacy? And that goes for all of us. And we want to make sure that the next council that take our seats, that, and the next city manager, that we be in a right place up and not down. With that being said, a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
All in favor? All in favor? Yeah, all right, thank you. The meeting adjourned, you're wrong. Ms. Ford, is the survey still open?